Giving the gold star.
Okay, we're recording now.
I missed you guys, I just.
All right, we are nine o'clock. We're gonna call the April 7th, how did we get to April already, but April 7th, Scott County Board of Commissioners. We're gonna convene this meeting. Join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I should mention too, before we get to the amendments to the agenda, that we are fully staffed here. We, five of us are here, one on the phone. Our administrator is out in the audience and she'll be making an appearance right with the HD and we wanna make sure we get you some good camera time. And we're social distance, so we're very well spaced out and I'll just let that drop where it is. Number two, any amendments to the agenda? We've had it distributed. I don't think there are any amendments at all, I'm looking just to make sure, so we're gonna let that stand. Number three, approved minutes of the March 31st, 2020 county board meetings. Those also were distributed. If there are any changes or deletions, anything?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Otherwise, I will look to Tracy for a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Wickman-Brecky.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
Approved. Moving to number four, recognition of interested citizens. This is, we have a very sparse group here today, but this is always available to folks. They ever wanna come and address the board, this is a great opportunity to do that. And I should mention, in this day and age, at least for the time being, we're, well, we're always available, looking to my left and right, we're always available via email, cellphone. As board members, we answer those emails and answer those phone calls, so we're always available that way. I see Leslie at the podium.
Mr. Chairman, yes, in the building, actually, we did have somebody monitoring the doors if somebody from the public had wanted to come.
Nice, thank you.
So, that would've been available as well. Commissioner Wolf had asked for just a brief update and due to stay-home Minnesota, it would've been better if Mr. Winicki could've been here, the county engineer, but he's not here at this time. Just an update for those of you watching, we are aware of the crash that happened at County Highway 21 and County Highway 21, or 91, excuse me, last week. It is being reviewed and the usage on the road from a 24-hour basis to try to analyze the right control at that intersection. As most of you are aware, County Highway 21 is a very important mobility corridor and it was built to move people from I-35 to Prior Lake. It does not have a lot of development along it or commercial-type development along it that requires a lot of access. So, right now, they are evaluating the potential for a median through that intersection with right-in, right-outs, and U-turns, as well as a signal. A signal would have the potential of kinda changing how that road operates some and urbanizing it more. Part of it is the timing of the development to the north and south also of that area, especially to the north, which isn't in the current near-future. But that could change, which also might mean some potential access to the north in the future. So, right now, they are looking at that data. They're working with SRF, the consultant who's done all of the traffic counts on there, to come back with a recommendation, I believe, on the 21st of April, with how they wanna move that intersection forward. And those are the two types of controls right now that Mr. Winicki and the department are taking a look at. So, that is the update on that intersection.
Okay. Mr. Chair, just thank you, because we're getting a lot of comments from the neighborhoods out there and to do something. So, it'd be very nice if we found an answer, so, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Wolf, and, you know, they dedicate their lives to making people safe. If you look at the overall data for our Scott County highway system, we are below regional and state for safety on our roadways. And they take great pride in that for how we manage our roadways and the types of turning movements and trying to manage them from a system approach. So, when something like this happens, they don't take this very easily either. And so, they're trying to make sure that we don't have any negative consequences as well to the solution they recommend.
I just heard you say, "We're lower than, our safety record is below." What you mean is, "We're below the state standard, we're actually better than the state standard." Better is a better word than below the state.
Yeah, all right. So, we are, we are better, we are better. If you take a look at the crash rates on our system, we are better than both the regional and the state averages for roads of similar types, yes.
Thank you for making that clear.
In that intersection, I mean, there was an open house. I only remember that because I was trying to get to it, but had another meeting. So, this, we're not just looking at this, this has been under, I don't know what the right term is, investigation, if you wanna call it that, analysis.
Yeah, we always monitor intersections. This is, intersection has been in play and we've been counting and taking a look at it. If you go back to January 1st of 2006, the road was upgraded and then completed in sometime the fall of 2005, maybe finished in '06. But, there's only been 17 crashes at this intersection in that time period, which actually is fairly low. Now that there have been two fadals in the past year is concerning. One of them, though, was definitely distracted driving and there's nothing we can engineer to solve those types of things right now from a highway perspective. So, they are looking at the turning movements, the type of day. It's very odd that like five or six of these crashes have been at noon. There are very low traffic volumes on that road, that type of day, because it is a fairly heavy commuter route and it's what it really is there to do, is to move people during those time periods, so.
In this, I know we're gonna get into this, but this last one was like late morning or?
Correct, it was right around that noon time period as well. It was a eastbound car with a westbound truck that made a left turn headed onto 91. That is like six of the 17 crashes, I believe, are that movement.
Interesting.
And so, one of the things with the signal, if it goes in, it will not have a flashing yellow. It will be red during those times, because that's the movement that we're trying to prevent from happening.
Yep, very good. Thanks for that update and we'll have more on that.
He'll be back on the 21st.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And not seeing anyone else, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. These items will, I'll run through these, these items will pass in one motion and have been vetted by the staff. So, let me just go through them here. 5.1, adopt resolution number 2020-057, authorizing agreement number 191059 between Scott County and the Metropolitan Council to provide dollar ride services and transit link in Scott and Carver Counties. 5.2, adopt resolution number 2020-058, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the city of Savage for the design and construction of a traffic signal at the County Highway 27 and Conley Parkway intersection. I was gonna take a pause and see if John wanted to, you know, do some pom-poms on that one or not, but. 5.3, adopt resolution number 2020-059, authorizing an amendment to the cooperative agreement with the city of Elko, New Market, for the roundabout in the County Highway 2 and County Highway 91 intersection. 5.4, adopt resolution number 2020-061, authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the sale and removal of a single-family house from 16301 Texas Avenue, also County Highway 27, in Credit River Township. 5.5, adopt resolution number 2020-062, authorizing final payment to Kramer North America LLC for County Highway 8 Bridge number 7063, County Project 08-17 in the amount of $1,000. 5.6, adopt resolution number 2020-063, authorizing final payment to Ram Excavating Inc. for County Highway 51 and County Highway 53 culvert replacements in the amount of $4,222.18. 5.7, adopt resolution number 2020-064, authorizing submission of a live Well-At-Home Grant. Say that. Yeah, yeah, live, there you go, live well, that makes better sense, live well-at-home grant to the Minnesota Department of Human Services. 5.8, adopt resolution number 2020-065, awarding a construction contract to Mathiowitz Construction Company for County Highway 42 reconstruction project in the cities of Shakopee and Prior Lake. 5.9, adopt resolution number 2020-066, awarding a construction contract to Kilmer Electric Company Incorporated for County Project 99-02 Phase 1 Fiber Interconnect for the county's advanced traffic management system along County Highway 16, 17, 69, and 101. That'd be awesome. 5.10, adopt resolution number 2020-070, awarding a construction contract to Ryan Contracting Company for construction of a roundabout at the County Highway 2 and County Highway 91 intersection in the city of Elko, New Market. 5.11, adopt resolution number 2020-056, approving single-day cleanup agreements with the cities of New Prague, Shakopee, Jordan, Savage, Belle Plaine, Elko, New Market, and Prior Lake. 5.12, adopt resolution number 2020-067, approving the city of Shakopee Surface Water Management Plan, November 2019. 5.13, approve the request for preliminary and final plat of Herman Edition consisting of two lots on 29.71 acres, Dennis Herman applicant and property owner, and conservation easements in Section 22 of Cedar Lake Township. 5.14, approve renewal applications for Scott County 32 malt liquor and retail licenses for 2020 within Scott County Townships. 5.15, approve the renewal application for an intoxicating liquor license for 2020 for Castle Kitchens, DBA Minnesota Renaissance Festival, and Louisville Township. 5.16, adopt resolution number 2020-051, reappointing Anthony J. Winicki, a very fancy, where's Tony? He's not in here, of course. Anthony J. Winicki is the Scott County Highway Engineer for a four-year term for the period from May 1st, 2020, through April 30th, 2024, and rescinding resolution number 2016-072. And the last item, 5.17, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the items on consent. Are there any that you'd like polled for, for any reason, or talk about any of them, or?
Mr. Chair, just a comment on 5.2. I am very thankful that we are gonna be putting a stoplight at Conley and 27. We've had a number of significant injuries, accidents there, and so that's a very good thing, thank you for that.
Awesome, yep. I, it'll be nice passing through that intersection with a light. Yes?
I was just gonna comment on 5.2 also, Mr. Chair. And thank John for his tenacity and dogging that thing for, till we actually got it going. The other one is 5.16, I believe, 21, he's a county engineer. I wish he was here today so we could pull it and talk about him, but since he's not, we'll let it go on consent and seize the day another time when he's actually here for a presentation. But thank him for his good work.
All right. Those are the 17 items. None of them are being polled.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve those 17 items on consent.
Motion?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Otherwise, I will look to Tracy for yet another roll call.
Commissioner Wickman-Brecky.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. Now, we're gonna move to 6.1, receive a coronavirus update. What do we have for new news? It seems like it's new every moment.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board and those in the audience. My name's Scott Haas, I'm the Director of Emergency Management and Communications for the Sheriff's Office.
Good morning.
Today, myself and Lisa Brodsky, our Director of Public Health, will be talking about the ever-changing situation with COVID-19 and how that's impacting us as a county. We were here last week and while, yes, a lot has changed over the last seven days, many of the things that are impacting us in Minnesota are somewhat similar. We've heard bad things about what's going on in New York, some of the hotspots that are there and as I'm sure Lisa will talk about, the disease has progressed some from some of those heavy population centers and will be making its way towards Minnesota and towards our community more. We have had impacts in our community already and I'll defer to Lisa to talk about those. We are preparing, we are preparing as a county for the eventual spike of this disease in our community. We know this is a long-term event. We know that the modeling that's been done is based on some limited information, but is getting better every time they new, or they run a new run on it. We know that the current forecast is that we're expecting, MDH is expecting a peak or a spike of this disease in our community somewhere in the six-to-eight week range. So, we're gonna be in this for a while yet. And I wanna stress that enough. I know that a lot of people are kinda tired from being cooped up in their homes and they're missing getting out and being able to recreate and being able to socialize. I miss being able to get a haircut. This impacts us all and, you know, we have to understand that this is going to be a long-term event. We have to understand that the actions that we take now to socially distance ourselves, to protect ourselves, to protect our loved ones, is critical to keep this disease at bay and to delay the impact on our communities. I also wanna highlight, this is time to be taking care of ourselves. We know that healthy people have a really good chance of being exposed to this, but having lower impact than those who are not. So, now is time for my lecture to the board to get enough sleep and take care of yourselves and I need to lecture myself on that as well. But it's time to take care of ourselves, take care of our families, take care of our communities, and then take care of the county as a whole. We know this is a long-term event with a spike being potentially two months out. We know by the time that we're done recovering from this, it could be another three to four months. We also know that the long-term impacts of this are gonna go beyond the disease. We know there's an economic impact that's already being felt in our communities. A lot of people aren't being employed. The unemployment spike is, it's tremendously high. The number of claims in are exceeding 300,000 in the state. That's horrible for our community and for our state. We know there's a lot of good people who are out of work right now for, by no means of their own, because right now, that's what we have to do to keep our community safe. The county continues to work through taking the right preparations, the right actions, so that we are maintaining awareness and preparation for this disease and doing the best thing we can do to protect our citizens. We're continuing to execute our operational plans that have been adopted by the board a week ago, looking at those and adapting as needed. I wanna highlight some of the things that are really going well. Some of you may be aware of some of the great work that's been going on in our library system, where now the library is offering a curbside pickup. Again, this is just a great example of the drive from our business units in the county to look and see, how do they operate in this new normal? How do they continue to provide tremendous service to our citizens, looking at what that means? Again, a lot of creativity going into place through, throughout the organization to make sure people get the assets and the resources that they need to be able to continue to function. I also wanna congratulate and thank our volunteers for the work they're doing. We're filling gaps using volunteers. There's some people who weren't able to do their normal business because of the changing times and we found a way to connect our volunteers through our volunteer coordinator to fill some of those gaps and now people are able to adapt and continue to operate in this new normal that we're facing. So, I really wanna give credit to the volunteers that are stepping up and helping our community in this difficult time. From the perspective of emergency management, we're also thinking ahead and continuing to think ahead. We're looking at the impacts of, that secondary impact of the economy and the economic impacts, but we're also continuing to plan, excuse me, plan for what else could happen. We know that next week is Severe Weather Awareness Week. I wanna highlight to the board, we are still gonna have summer, we're still gonna have storms. And from emergency management's perspective, we're still leaning forward and thinking ahead to what could happen and being prepared for that. So, the county is continuing to operate, we're continuing to look ahead, we're continuing to use best practices and prepare for what could be and whatever the changes that the world decides to throw at us. So, with that, I'll step back and invite Director Brodsky up.
Can I ask Scott a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Scott, can I just ask one question before we go back? Can you just, it's really good to hear that we've been able to utilize volunteers so quickly. Can you just give us some examples of what's happening in that arena?
Sure, one specific example is we had, with the world changing, we had some people who were in the childcare business, who, we know that schools are delivering free food, but people have to stay at their home to make sure they're taking care of the kids. Yet, there's free food that can allow those kids to eat. And one of the gaps we were able to fill is the childcare provider has to stay in their home, has to make sure the kids are safe, and now they can't access this food. So, now we've been able to bridge that gap and a volunteer is able to pick up that food and make that delivery to the childcare provider. So, we don't have anyone being placed in risk of the childcare provider feeling like they need to put everyone in a enclosed van and go stand by and get food. We're allowing business to continue as normal by supplementing with a volunteer.
Great example, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning, Commissioner Beer, commissioners. Oh, I did it again, sorry. It's been a week since we've been here, not much has changed.
A week? Feels like about a year.
It's been a lot of hours.
A week, okay.
But, I wanna start with pointing out that this is Public Health Week, National Public Health Week, which I feel is very relevant. I want to take a moment just to recognize my staff, my public health staff, whose commitment and passion and caring for the citizens of our county is evident day in and day out. And I'm just so true, I feel truly blessed to have such a wonderful staff. I also wanna recognize that the entire county is doing public health right now. Little p, little h, even by social distancing, you're doing public health. So, just recognizing how important public health is, especially at this time. I brought to you some data. I kinda sensed the need for additional data last time I was here. So, we have, I have been putting together some additional surveillance reports, trying to pull as much data as I possibly can from multiple different sources. Just to let you know, as of today, we have 16 confirmed cases. We did get one in late last night. We still only have one death, which is good, and that was an individual who was a very senior individual with some underlying health conditions. This data, just, you get this report now, I believe? The data has different dates on it because the data is, it trickles in.
Sure.
So, I first get a case and then a couple hours later, I get some demographic information and the next day, I have to call and they have to go through the file currently and I'm asking very specific questions about ICU and hospitalization, because this will help us understand, you know, if we have a 5% need for ICU, then when we have 1,000 cases, that tells me how many ICU beds we might need and when might be the trigger for an alternate care site or other resources such as that to support the response. The COVID, on the right, you'll see the state map of the US. That's only updated about every three or four days, so you'll see a different date there. Again, it's still widespread. It hasn't really changed that much, but as of last night, US-wide, we had 337, 971 cases in the US. There's about 1.5 million cases worldwide. It does still continue to increase. On the bottom right corner, you'll see other Minnesota data. That comes up out at 11 o'clock. It's updated at 11:00 AM every day, so I update that when I get those numbers. We have 30 deaths as of yesterday, 986 total positive cases out of about 28,000 people that have been tested. On the next page of this report, I have some Scott County data. As you can see, I know it's continuing to increase, 16 in total, but it's been pretty flat, if you look at that. That, to me, is very positive. We're getting, you know, we don't have new cases every day, that's really good. It seems to be getting, spreading out. We, I'm getting, you know, one or two, the maximum new cases we've had in one day has been two. So, that's good. On the bottom, and this will change over time, so at the beginning, we had a lot of cases that were related to travel, mostly international travel, or direct exposure to a case that was positive, that either someone that they were living with or very close contact. That will start to change as we get more community transmission, but as of yesterday, about 60% of our cases were either travel or direct exposure. About a third were neither and then 6.7% are just, they don't really, they just don't know. There's been uneven notification, so I've been trying to calculate between the time that they first noticed symptoms and the time we're notified. What I really would like to know is first symptoms and the time they actually get tested, so I know this person maybe have been in, has been in the community for about seven days, 10 days, not knowing that they were positive. But, we've had it quickly as someone who has first noticed symptoms to the time that we were notified was three days. That's really short. I'd like to see that. 28 days makes me nervous. So, I'm trying to kinda guess how much, how many people approximately they've exposed.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Lisa, on that regard, who gets notified? Like, if somebody feels sick, are they supposed to call Scott County? Or is this when they go to their doctor and their doctor reports?
Right, so this is only those that are tested? So, they'll go to their physician, they'll get a test, and then MDH is, either the test goes to MDH or it goes to independent lab and then MDH gets notified when the result is in and then the doctor gets notified and then the patient gets notified. So, these are only people that have actually qualified for a test, which is limited.
So, no one can just walk over to Walgreens and get the test? You actually have to have a reason to call your physician. Excuse me. This is not COVID. This is pollen in the air.
Yes, and mold.
Right.
Mold, yeah.
It's the season.
It's the season and we're grateful spring is here, but this happens every spring. So, you just can't walk into Walgreens and get a test. You have to have symptoms, the headache, the dry cough and fever, and go to your medical professional and they're the ones that trigger the notification then.
Well, they'll first screen you and you have to be pretty, you know, right now, only healthcare workers, those in congregate settings, and so there's only limited criteria to actually even get a test. But what we get notified are only ones that have actually been tested and then tested positive, so.
So, if I walked in there complaining about watery eyes and coughing froggy in my throat, they'd give me some Benadryl and tell me to go home?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Most likely. Tried to look at some gender differences. Are there any gender differences? As of yesterday, it was 60/40 women to men. State breakdown is 51/49, the new case now changed that, so it's 56/46. As our numbers grow, this will level off to pretty much what the population is. So, there really are, isn't any, any differences there. The youngest case that we've had was 22, the oldest 86. And if you look at the curve, you'll see the bell curve with those on the top right. What is the age breakdown of our cases? And most of our cases have either had underlying health conditions and that could be asthma, obesity, diabetes, sleep apnea, I'm sorry, they haven't had those. And the common risk factor, that would be if you are over 65 or pregnant. So, the green is the no. The blue is, yes, they have had those, which puts them at higher risk.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm noticing on that scale that Commissioner and Ulrich and I are in the safest category. We should be here and the rest of these youngsters should be at home, so.
Or, or it could be that that's the group that is staying at home.
Well, there is that too, yeah.
Leslie's doing her best to try to get us to stay home.
I have, I have been trying to get race data. If you look at the Minnesota Department of Health website, they actually just released some race data that indicates about 75% of the cases in the state have been white. What I'd also like to see, though, is what has been the breakdown of the race of the individuals that have been able to get tested? So, depending on, you know, is there any kind of differences there? So, I'm waiting for that data and right now, I have not been successful in getting race data for our cases, but I am, I've been promised for two weeks in a row that I'm gonna get a full data download, which would be really nice, because then I can kinda automate the report as opposed to doing it manually right now. So, more data to come. The other data I wanted to share, I've been working on the community needs assessment. I talked a little bit about last time. And last Saturday, on April 4th, we did some survey, surveying, appropriately social distancing, of course, at the Esperanza Food Distribution Event. And here are some initial findings from that. I'm not quite finished, I'm only, have gone through about half of the surveys. We got almost 200 surveys filled out, so I've only gone about half through. And it's a mixed bag, some really good news, some surprising things that I felt very positive about. But, initial findings of that survey is, and I expected this to be different, but I'm really pleased to see that 100%, we asked them, "Has anybody in, does anybody in your home even have any kind of symptoms like fever, cough, anything related to, any ILIs, influenza-like symptoms?" 100% said no. I expected there to be, and I did go through all of them, I didn't see any positive ones. I expected to see that there was more cases that haven't been reported because they can't get tested, so I feel really... So, I feel really very positive about that. 67% did say, I was asking about access to healthcare, are you able to go to a clinic or a hospital if you, if you need to? 67% said yes. And another good positive is 100% said that they are staying six feet away from other people as much as possible. So, they understand that social distancing is needed, they understand the concept of social distancing, and they're practicing it. So, really good positive news. We asked them about some of their immediate needs, and this information is really important as far as from a public health perspective. I want to know what their needs are, how can we help the community? But also, when this is over, it's going to inform us of what's the surge going to be on our services? Really key, because where do we need to focus and increase our, our capacity to serve people? And it was a food distribution, so it's not surprising that 93% said they needed food. 29% had some concerns about getting medicines. And that also could be because, you know, you can't, I went for allergy medicines the other day, Commissioner Beard, and I literally got the last bottle.
Oh, my.
So, there is a lot, there's a lot of hoarding happening and a lot of run on medicines, but 29% had concerns about that. 21% had concerns about healthcare access, and most of the comments were, I don't have health insurance. So, the good news is if they do get COVID, co-pays and fees are waived, so, right now, so that hopefully will address that. And I, in my opinion, other good news was only 5% said transportation is an issue, and only 4% said housing is an issue right now. So, that made me feel very positive. I would be very concerned if 50% said I might be homeless in the next three weeks. So, good news, some, some good news for us. I also asked them about if they're currently working, and this, not surprising, 63% said no. And that's, that's huge.
When was this? This was?
This Saturday.
Oh, it was? Oh, okay, okay.
And the people that came to the food pickup.
Came to the food pickup.
Okay.
And we will be doing it again this coming Saturday.
Right.
People are coming.
Yeah, people are coming because they have need. Only 6% said they were working. And again, not completely finished analyzing, but this is initial data. 11% chose not to respond, and 20% that they currently have a temporary position. Commissioner Beard, did you have a question?
To just underscore the, the point when we're dealing with statistics, this is a skewed sample, of course. If they're coming to a food shelf, those of us that are still working are probably not going to come to the food shelf. We'll probably be donating to the food shelf.
Correct.
Just to be clear.
Yep, and two caveats with that. I don't know what this was like two months ago.
Yeah, so we don't have a baseline to start from.
We don't have a baseline, so this is a convenient sample. But I am partnering with the metro, and we are looking at doing a randomized sample much broader to kind of get some of that data to compare this to.
Well, in, in just, on the food item alone, 93%, I mean, so I, I was at a local grocery store for some essentials yesterday in Para Lake, and Young Mr. Cromie said, they had, they had a lot of items there, but there were some open shelves. He had said that 60% of folks, and this is across the country, their food budget goes to eating out. And I was like, whoa, 60%? I had to look at my own like, oh, we're probably less than that because we had some allergy issues, but. So, people aren't eating out as much, they're doing takeout and just hammering the grocery stores. So, I'm really curious if, and I, I know this was a snippet in time, and if this is just until we can get supply chain to, to some extent, get the grocery stores filled back up again, or if this is a, if it's that high always? Which I know it's, this is just a snippet and not a, you know, scientific sample, which certainly don't want to explain it away at all, which I'm not trying to do, but just to fully understand that is moving forward, as you said, services that might come crashing back.
Right.
One, just to be prepared and understand that a little bit better.
And when, and when I look at this data, I, I think about that. And then I also think about, well, if food is their biggest need, if we can just take care of that right now, are they going to be okay? And that, and so that's what we're currently working on. How can we make people hopefully be okay? Because this really is about, you know, there's, there's, we can talk about social distancing and, and good infection control. This is a natural disaster. It's difficult to prevent. But how do we make sure that our citizens get through this okay? And then also, what do they need to be more resilient? So, they'll be able to recover on their own without needing county services. So, again, snippet in time, we might get completely different results next week. I do have some trend data that I'm about to share with you to kind of see where were they before and where are they now? So, I'll go to that. So, at that, this food distribution this weekend, Esperanza served a lot of families, 235 families, 75 were Latino, 10 were Somali, 150 were white. In total, that was 1,175 individuals at a cost of only 1,500. And so, part of the reason those are, those include, Cub Foods is giving them a lot of donations. The community has really come forward and given donations. They still need dry goods for anybody who wants to make a donation. But that's at a cost of $1.27 per person for five to seven days of food, which is amazing. Their monthly average is about 120 to 160. They do it once a month previously. They've now increased their capacity to once a week. On March 28th, they expected 50 people, 50 families. They got 175. They got 235 this past weekend. So, I've done some linear, you can see a trend line there. In a couple weeks, they might be up to 300, 350. We've also talked with the CAP agency. I just got some data this morning. In the past three weeks, they've served 404 households, and that's their regular delivery. Seventy-six, seventy-six households, or pardon me, 404 households of regular delivery. They've increased and added additional mobile services, so additional 76 households. And then they did a completely new extra route, adding 65 households. That represents in the past week, three weeks, 400, 4,925 pounds of food delivered. And three out of their four locations for their mobile, mobile food shelf, they've added one extra delivery to accommodate seniors in the, in those buildings. So, I'm happy to hear that they are serving, able to increase and ramp up. Part of what we're doing as in public health is helping these entities increase their capacity to serve those folks. So, some of what we're doing, we're in the process right now of providing a freezer, an additional large freezer and fridge for the CAP agency in order to store the donated fresh foods items that they're getting, so they can serve and continue to serve more people as their demand increases. We purchased a freezer for Esperanza to store additional meat products, which includes chicken. They don't normally, often don't, haven't had Somali families, because what Cub Foods is donating is pork, and Somali families can't eat that, but we were able to purchase three boxes of chicken for them, large boxes. And they had, they actually had some Somali families come this past weekend. We are going to continue to operate Backstretch Garden as well as identify some other options that we will be allowed to do to allow families to grow fresh fruits and vegetables. These are expensive items, and being able to reduce some of the costs there will hopefully be cost savings. And happy to share that all of this was funded through the statewide Health Improvement Partnership, SHIP.
I see where you're looking, that's why I looked.
I figured you'd ask this question, and you're thinking to yourself, I'm so glad we support that. And the Moving Health Equity Data to Action, the MEETA project, is allowing us to purchase some of these things, particularly the food from that health equity perspective. So, no tax dollars have gone into that.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Levy dollars.
Okay, funded through grant funding.
No levy dollars, they're state taxpayer dollars.
Correct, correct.
And this former legislator, current commissioner, is actually glad to see SHIP dollars being spent to meet a natural disaster need, an urgency that doesn't involve telling people to go outside and play and stop smoking. So, we're actually feeding people who are in a real pinch point right now. Back up one slide, what is that second acronym? I haven't heard of this group, Moving Somebody Equity Data. What's that?
That's the MEETA grant we got last year that is giving us about $33,000 a year to focus on some of the health equity gaps that we noted in our previous SHIP work. And it really is very flexible dollars. So, where SHIP has a lot of, you can't bend this and you have to utilize this. Really, the MEETA grant just says whatever the community has identified as a need, go ahead. So, this has really allowed us, that's what we were able to utilize. That funding provided us the ability, or is providing us the ability to purchase, like, food, chicken. SHIP does not allow that, even in this current time, SHIP is not allowing that, so.
Federal or state tax dollars?
It was, SPAN, I believe, is a federal dollar.
Okay, thank you.
We applied for this grant, and they only gave three grants statewide, and we were one of the recipients. So, really excited about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Beard.
Also, another question.
Yes.
Yeah, I have two, Lisa. First, for, for the Esperanza food distribution, did you survey at all where people were coming from? Are they primarily Shakopee area? Is it broader into Scott County? I mean, we know CAP is serving the whole county.
Right, we did not, but we're thinking of adding that to our question for next time. And we did note on our, we did, my next slide kind of covers a little bit of that. But we did note on our listening session that there were people from all over the metro that were listening in and asking questions about where they can get help. So, we had people from Carver and Ramsey and Minneapolis, and I was kind of just directing them to their local health departments or resources. So, that was a good question that did came, come up.
Good, thanks. And then my second one is talking about the need for Esperanza to get more food donations. I'm sure for CAP, for our local food shelves. As I look on our Community Resources page, we have a donations section, but maybe we should add the food donations part to that, because I didn't see that. I might have missed it, but I didn't see that in there about the opportunities for food donations. I think people, that's an easy, not easy, it's an easy way to help for people who can, and if they can know hours to drop off, that type of thing, that'd be good.
Well, and they have, at the front door of Esperanza, for example, they have a cart, so people don't even have to come in. They can just take it and leave a bag right there, and they'll happily take it.
Yeah, so let's get that information out there that we can.
Okay, we'll do.
Thank you.
So, a little bit more, we did hold a community listening session on April 2nd in partnership with the Shakopee Diversity Alliance, and this was really to provide information on resources, answer questions, and listen. We had a little bit of snafu at the beginning if anybody was on it. We did get Zoom. Yes, we did get Zoom bombed. Of course, the email came out the next day that said, don't use Zoom because there's Zoom bombers. It was horrific, and, but we quickly were able to adapt and utilize one of our partners. UNIDOS Minnesota offered their secured stream device, and so we did get up and running again. We had lots of speakers. We had State Rep. Brad Tabkey and Shakopee Diversity Alliance Board members, Angelica Contreras from City of Shakopee, City Council. Minnesota Council of Latino Affairs Director was participating, Esperanza. I did a quick overview of just basic, general facts about coronavirus. I had one of my staffs, Brittany Clay, talk about isolation and quarantine and how to care for yourself at home. So, really just basic information. We had 70 live listeners, and they posted the video on the web. And as of last night, we had 5,200 views. So, that's where we should be doing some advertising. But we are also taking a lot of our resources that we put together and also putting it on that website, on that Facebook page. So, when they're accessing the video, that they can also download information on housing, information, and the food drives, and all of those resources that they're looking for. We are continuing to monitor community trends to tweak our survey a little bit and just try and get more information. If there's something in particular that you want to know from this or even from our surveillance tool, please let me know if you have some questions you'd like us to add. And we're working with some of our community partners to identify resources for individuals in isolation and quarantine. So, if we set up an isolation and quarantine site and they need food, what partnerships do we have in the community like Esperanza? Can we make arrangements for them just to take care of that and deliver food? So, those are some of the things that we're, we continue to work on. Any questions? Any burning questions about what data you'd like me to collect that you would really like to know?
Yeah, I would just say, I think it's important people know that, sitting here at the county, we don't, we're giving the information that we have. There's not some veiled, like, we know, like, just using, you know, the governor's, maybe he'll tweak something, maybe he'll extend something. I'm sitting here, I don't know. I don't think any of us know, and the same for some of these stats with, with the, with the virus. We don't know, I think as Americans, speaking for myself, like, we like to know concrete things, and this is anything but that. And so, as we get data, I think it's important that we, and we are doing that, get that data out to the folks. So, I wish that I had more concrete data, but we do not. Fair, fair statement for you as well?
It's a very fair statement, and I also would add what I know today. I might not know tomorrow.
Right, yes.
It changes so rapidly, and I could tell you 100% something today based on CDC and MDH, and next, in the next hour, I could be told that's wrong.
Yep.
So, it's such a rapidly changing event. We're doing, you know, we try and keep up as, as much as we can, and this is what we know right now and how to protect yourself today. And we hope, we hope that, that we're doing, you know, we know we're doing the best we can, and we're sharing as much as we possibly can. But it's, we've never seen anything like it, and I pray we never do again.
Yeah.
That is the key right there. Prayer.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Chair, just, just an observation. I know that a lot of this is based on modeling, and when this is all over, we should sit down and have a discussion, we collectively as people in government, about how we respond to models that say 2 million Minnesotans could be infected and 500,000 of them could die. Well, yeah, it could, and we could get hit by a meteor next week too. We need to have that discussion. Now is not the time because we're in it. Public fear and irrationality is rampant. I mean, look at the toilet paper crisis. For crying out loud, toilet paper has nothing to do with COVID-19. But yet, here we are, being irrational. So, whenever, we're just, I'm just speaking to the folks I represent in Shakopee, maybe to all of us, that patience, maturity, just do your, do your work and don't, be thoughtful and considerate of other people while this is going on. But know that, excuse me, when pollen season's over.
Exactly.
This passes.
Yep.
We should remember these things, and we should have a serious talk about who we're following and how things work. And I know the governor, I got to tip my hat to him. He responded aggressively to a very scary scenario that was painted. And then about three weeks in, the company that we hire, we, the state hires to make those projections, radically backed off of their scary what-if scenarios. And I hope he reacts to that and responds to that here in a couple of days with maybe lightening up a bit on the you got to stay home kind of thing. So, that's just an observation. And while we're in the current situation of the pandemic, and we as public officials are trying to enforce public health, I just have a request that we would use, particularly to, I'm thinking about the tattling hotline. That really sticks in my craw, that the state of Minnesota has a hotline, and I'm looking at my friends in the Sheriff's Department, and I hope friends at the Police Department are listening. Would you please exercise prosecutorial discretion? I mean, I heard that for 12 years as a legislator, well, we have to have discretion, the police would say. Okay, well, here's a big chance to authorize it. If somebody's sticking their thumb in the public eye, go for it. But if somebody's having some friends over to play cards and have a beer, come on, we don't need to write a ticket for that, do we? So, I'm just saying, I think in Scott County, we are very reasonable. The numbers you presented this morning, Lisa, give me great hope that this is probably going to be nowhere near what the original projections were. And I'm thinking, I'm sure that our law enforcement folks, they're our neighbors and friends too, and our relatives in many cases. We're probably going to do the responsible and reasonable thing. So, just, that's my dissertation for this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me in a few comments.
Well, and Commissioner Beard, I hope that the new modeling and what we're seeing today is because people are being compliant, and that that's really making a difference. I will turn it over to law enforcement to answer the question. Um, I will turn it over to law enforcement to answer the question, oh, Ron Hostvar, about enforcement.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to briefly respond to Commissioner, uh, Beard's comments about, uh, law enforcement. Uh, myself and along with the police chiefs have a, uh, weekly Zoom meeting about issues going on in the county. And my advice to them, to relate to their officers and deputies was to educate, not cite. And, uh, speaking of prosecutorial discretion, um, my office has that. And, uh, my intention, or like you said, unless there's something severe poking your, poking your thumb in the eye of public safety, is educate. Let's not be, uh, arresting our citizens because they're having a couple of beers with some friends.
Yeah. Thank you. And since we're on that topic, I was going to save that to the end. Um, but we are, this is my opinion, but we are all in this thing together. But I feel like we also need to say, but we're all in it differently. We're, we're coming at this differently, you know, and you can see it online, you, you get the hotline. We are in the soup. And there will be a time to come back and look at this thing completely. And we, we, as a county, absolutely will do that. We want to learn, we're, we're learning every day on this thing. So whether you agree with it, whether you don't agree with it, we're in it. And this board by no means is looking to try to pull the wool over the eyes of the citizens and remove any constitutional rights. We, I think I, well, not I think, we, that's our position, is we are not trying to do that. We want to get through this, get through the end, and then we can armchair this thing, which rightfully so. But I think people need to understand that, yes, we are all in this together, but differently. And people respond and cope differently and a little grace along the way, as you say, unless it's a, uh, you know, perverse poke in the eye, um, so be it. But, um, grace, we're in this thing together, a little mercy. Pray this thing up. I mean, on a regular basis, I pray for each one of us, our staff, our mayors, town boards, township boards, um, that we will get through this. And we see really good things coming out of this. Humanity is, is, the bell shaped curve is doing awesome things. Humanity is, we're getting squeezed and humanity is really responding well. The other side of the bell shaped curve, there's some people that maybe aren't handling it as well for various reasons. Um, so I just pray that we would give grace on both sides of that, um, as we get through this thing together. And we will. I have great, I said it last week, was it last week or was it last year? But I continue to have peace that surpasses all understanding in the midst of this. And just so people are aware, like, I've got two businesses, and then I do this, county commissioner, those businesses are shut down. One happens to be hospitality in the Black Hills. Hospitality is, um, kind of a, why, and we need to make that income in three months. Well, it's been cancellation, 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 because who knows? I still have peace that surpasses all understanding. The other one's shut down, we're nonessential. Okay, we're gonna, we'll figure it out one way or the other. We're gonna get through this. That's the underlying deal. We're gonna get through this thing together, but let's have grace and mercy for one another. Anything else on this particular point?
Sure.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, uh, to Commissioner Beard's, uh, comment about the hotline, I, I understand where you're coming from and, and agree, but I've heard from several of our colleagues around the state and from other jurisdictions that they're actually very happy that hotline's in place because it's taken pressure off of dispatch and other places that, that we need to be handling real crises and emergencies. So just another way to look at it, that it, it was done in a way, I think, to take pressure off of our local jurisdictions because the people calling are going to call somewhere. So let's, let's put them all into the same funnel, get the same information and deal with it the same way. So I, I see, um, Scott nodding his head. Do you agree it's helped us a bit or hurt us?
Uh, yes, thank you, Commissioners. And it really has, so the hotline is designed that when people call in, they reach the state hotline. Uh, the hotline vets the complaint and then only calls back if there's an actual need for law enforcement to respond. So instead of things coming in through nine one one and us having to dispatch out every single call, it does allow that filter to be placed. So it doesn't even get down to the point where it's dispatched out, uh, when, when we have that filter mechanism. I just re- want to reiterate the, uh, comments from, uh, Attorney Hostvar. Our law enforcement's really not out to pick on people for having a card game. Uh, we got better things to do in life. And, uh, the last thing our responders want to do is, uh, go into a potential COVID infected card game to tell someone to break it up. So maybe that's a little bit selfish, but that's reality.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, uh, to those comments, I want to say thank you. And I'm glad I made my comments because it gave us an opportunity to have a discussion and shed some light on a spot that's become pretty sore on a certain Facebook site, many of them in fact. So I'm glad we had a chance to actually talk that through in the, in one of the other prime reasons for the statewide hotline and how it affects our local nine one one crew. So thank you for the great discussion about that and glad I could be a catalyst to kick it off, I guess.
Well, and just, just one maybe extra point is, we're, we're saying, hey, do the social distancing. We're doing it here, we're, we're, you know, have, have less than ten in this. So we're, we're not saying, I don't want anyone to interpret that, oh, grace and mercy, you know, it's the wild, wild west, no.
Not at all.
Be prudent, you know, my own family, we're taking this seriously, although we've got two more in the house because the mission strip got canceled. So we could look like we're, we're almost, um, to the ten.
Right.
Um, but we're a family, we're, so they're playing football, they're, we're going to the park, we're walking, we're doing those things, which is still okay, I'm looking around, you can still go to the park, right? I'm looking at nodding heads, you can still go to the park.
But you can't go golfing, right?
I don't, well, apparently not, apparently not, which, yeah, you can't go golfing, but the trails are open. Looking at Leslie, the buildings are closed. Get out, enjoy some sunshine, if you meet somebody in the trail, you know, six feet, do what you can. But we don't need to be Gestapo about it, parks are open. Anything else on that topic?
Football with a social distancing rule, that would be an interesting game.
Well, it's, uh, you know, it's our own family.
You're the same household.
Same household.
You can tackle.
Same household. I don't think, well, there's tackling, the two, the two brothers.
I'm way off topic, I apologize.
Well, that's, you know, you gotta have a little fun with it too, um, otherwise you go crazy.
Yeah.
All right, so anything else on that update? Because now it's been fifteen minutes, there's probably new information. We'll, we'll pick that up the next time, yeah, we'll pick that up the next time. All right, thank you very much for, for, uh, that report. Uh, moving on to item number seven, committee reports and commissioner updates. I'm going to look down to my right.
Uh, great, it's, thank you. It's only been a week since we met on Thursday, April 2nd. I did attend the Louisville Township meeting to talk with them a little bit about the access proposal, the broadband proposal, um, made it clear that we're not, um, instigating that broadband access is a public good that we're providing, but just that we're here to help, uh, join them and, and, uh, a solution to get better broadband access to their area quickly. They did authorize, um, their chair to continue negotiations. I think their concern or what they wanted to look into is if other townships who would benefit from this project would be willing to support. So that meeting was on Thursday. I know two of our other townships, um, had meetings that night, one met in person and one was able to get their virtual meetings up and going, Helena did, um, but Sand Creek met in person. There should be three additional township meetings tonight. I think they're all in person right now, um, using social distancing. For so many of them with only, uh, three board members, often at least two of those board members need to sign checks, sometimes three need to sign documents. Many of them determined that instead of people driving around and actually maybe not being as safe, having the short meetings where they get their business done and get in and out, uh, most of them are keeping agendas short and trying to limit, um, public, you know, limit items that, that would create a, a big public, public attendance. So, um, otherwise, I just wanted to say I've, I've went through many of the operational service plans, um, from the departments. I think it's really great, we have that on the website and available to the public because so many people wonder what's going on, what are we doing? You know, uh, for me, it's riveting reading, maybe for a lot of people it's not. But I think they're very accessible, showing what each of our departments are still doing. Um, I found that to be very good and interesting. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Looking down on my left, Commissioner Beard.
Uh, Ms. Chair, I just got in Sunday night, um, nothing new to report since we talked last Tuesday. I will mention though that, uh, I have two meetings, one this afternoon and one tomorrow via Zoom. I do not have Zoom installed, but perhaps I should talk to Ms. Brodsky about the excitement surrounding using Zoom apparently. So maybe I'll just call in and do the audio portion, but, uh, I look forward to another report in two weeks.
Sounds good. How about Commissioner Ulrich?
I have, uh, two meetings to report, uh, both, uh, call-in meetings. On the first, uh, and the sixth, they were, um, for the Greater MSP Business Investment Task Force. I'm, uh, that's in my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the second, I, um, and these are all phone meetings, not all of them, but, um, with, uh, Tony Winnick, our engineer, about the, um, twenty-one ninety-one intersection with the, uh, Chris Kostick, the Credit River Township Chair. On the third, uh, had a meeting, uh, on our Muriel that is going to go into the new, uh, building. And a lot of very nice creative designs, uh, came from that.
Good to hear.
Some really, really good stuff, so it's, uh, it's, it's going to look great. Um, it's just, the problem's going to be picking out which one. And then, uh, last night, Credit River had their, uh, monthly meeting. And, uh, a couple of things, uh, of note, we're getting a lot of people throwing junk in the ditches. I don't know if you guys are, but.
What's going on with that?
Some of these cleaning, you know, people are cleaning out their garages, their house, they have nothing to do. So they get, uh, you know, some beer, I guess, or whatever, and go out and drive and then put, throw stuff in the ditch. Um, and that's not far from the truth.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so and then you're also seeing, uh, um, the sheriff's report, they, you're seeing a lot of, uh, if, if you don't have something locked down or nailed down on the side, whether it's a trailer or a motorcycle or a mower, whatever, someone sees that as an opportunity. So lock it up. A lot of calls for that type of stuff, so, uh, but, uh, on a little different note, you know, slow down on the roads. I know there's not a lot of people out there, but that doesn't mean go ninety. So, and don't text to drive.
Nice, 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 ah, boy. Um, thank you very much. Uh, and my report's similar, a lot of phone meetings, a lot of Zoom meetings, um. And yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of things going on, uh, with that ditch. I know the, the hazardous waste is closed.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you've ever been in that building and to see what they collect, do not throw that stuff in the ditch. I mean, aye, 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 um, it, please, 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 please do not throw that stuff in the ditch. We'll be open hopefully soon and we'll be able to take that stuff at the proper time. Um, looking to our county administrator.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. Uh, first off, just want to thank our staff again because they're working under some really different circumstances and with some unique things, as you all know, going on in the community. And I think responding really well as I've listened, you know, we've had a few things with some Wi-Fi connections and laptops, but I think we've worked through most of those things, um, by now. We have two major cross-training in critical services going on. Um, we are into our second week in dispatch with three employees. And we're beginning, um, the JAF this week with volunteers who have signed up to do those and learn those services. Um, so those are pretty big deals. And of course, you saw the four already that were overworking in the jail, um, to help out in that area. So staff are stepping up, they are volunteering, um, and their attitudes have been, been really good through that. Um, a reminder too, to use our website, um, co.scott.mn.us for information, um, that situational report.
ScottCountyMN.gov.
Oh, sorry, co.scott.mn.gov, not us. I think either one will get you there though. Anyway, the, the COVID information, the situational report that Lisa, um, just shared is, is on there and updated daily as well. You'll also see it through our Facebook page if you go to Scott County. Um, we post things there and people can get the latest links to that and also to the Department of Health for information on changes. Um, our community services are also on there for folks. We talk about food and, and, and housing, um, Lisa noted that, so I don't need to add anymore. But we will note Commissioner, um, Brocky's comment and for donations and, and link people to that as well. Um, the DMV changed again Monday, yesterday. Um, they had shut us down completely as of four twenty-seven. They opened up yesterday non-face-to-face, so title changes, tabs, those types of things where you can submit it into our Dropbox or mail it. People are again able to work on those types of items and get those, um, funneled through the state of Minnesota. So again, if you go to our website or our Facebook site, um, either one of those, you can find an updates because it seems to change daily, if not hourly, as we've talked about.
Leslie, on, on that note, that's the Dropbox right outside the main entrance?
Correct, there's a big blue box, um, right outside our entrance where you can drop any type of, uh, work that you need, except court. We're not taking court-type documents, but something for HHS, something for highway, something for planning, something for community services, which would be tabs or the DMV. There is also one at the Workforce Center, if it's closer for you, over at County Highway eighty-three where the CAP agency is and the Workforce Center is. There's also a Dropbox there as well where people can drop off and it will be brought over here. We check those boxes, I believe it's on an hourly basis to make sure that they're brought in and then kept up to speed with people drop off.
And there is that little video out there that the staff did a very impromptu, put that together so you know what to look for and where it's at.
Correct, yep, there is an example. I don't think you can miss it, it's big and blue, it's about, what, three by two feet, it's pretty big, good size, so.
Good.
And then, um, of course, we're still at the administration and ER, working through the implementation, um, of those federal laws for leave and things like that, that Lori updated you on, um, last week and the impacts to that and how do we administrate, administer those appropriately. So lots going on, um, trying to keep people on our website and social media updated. Um, if they ever have any questions, there's emails and phone numbers to call on both of those sites, um, if they have questions, so. Any questions? Have you?
Not a question, but just a comment to add on, just to tell people that they should call. Our staff will walk through things, especially customer service things. And I think everybody would rather that if you're unsure about filling out forms or what to drop off, to call instead of dropping it off, getting a call to come pick it up, drop it off again, that type of thing. Our phones are being answered.
Yeah, that's a great point, yeah. We have hundreds, I want to say it was like three hundred calls a day we've been averaging down there, so, yeah. People are calling as well.
Good. Thank you. Mr. County Attorney.
Oh, we do not need to meet, um, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to update the board and the citizens on, uh, my choose-not-to-use committee, on that we use to support the, uh, anti-drug for our citizens and primarily our youth. Um, as you know, we have our annual fundraiser in September and, uh, decided to call that off for this year. Um, not because I don't think the golf courses will be open and not because I don't think the pandemic will be over, but because it is supported primarily through our local small businesses. And I just can't see going and asking them for donations this year. So instead, we are going to support our local community and choose-not-to-use will be donating ten thousand dollars to, uh, Second Harvest Heartland, uh, to support our communities. So this will no, in no way stop our efforts or stop the work of choose-not-to-use. We still have, uh, funding to, uh, go through the year and still pursue our mission. And we'll, we'll be back stronger than ever with our fundraiser, which, uh, I think everyone enjoys. We have a good time and we raise a lot of funds and we'll be back with that in twenty twenty-one.
Awesome, thank you. That, that, that is a, uh, a highlight. It's just the community coming together and seeing people in maybe a little bit different light than you normally do in the nine to five, um, so that's going to be sorely missed, but thank you for continuing that, good work. Thank you very much. Um, all right, with that, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second and any discussion before we take a vote? I, I too just want to say to our staff, thank you for being flexible. I mean, they are our friends and neighbors here in the county. Um, and it's been, um, a, a, a big ask and a lot of people have jumped in to cross-train and fill in voids and, and, um, it's been really awesome to see that, so that does not go unnoticed. And to our citizens, thank you, we're in the soup together, maybe differently, but we're in it together. So let's remember to be respectful and to be gracious to one another. There will come a time, whether you think we're, as a state or country, overreacting or underreacting, there'll be a time when we can dissect up that when we get to some solid ground. But for now, let's be respectful and be gracious to one another. And we are in it together, albeit differently, so let's be gracious and respectful to one another. With that, we'll look for a roll call to adjourn.
Commissioner Wickman-Brecke.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beer.
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
They're adjourned, thank you.